Alright, we are good to go now. So it is officially now 7:09 and I'll call this meeting to order. This is, uh, today is Thursday, April 9th. This is a meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. This meeting is being recorded so that everyone on this line knows it is being recorded and it is, um, also going to be streamed by the Burninston Northfield Community Television for future broadcasts. Um, and if it's available to be streamed live, it will be done. Um, just a couple housekeeping things because we are trying this virtual meeting. Um, if I could ask everyone to mute their microphones so that limits the amount of background noise that we have. Um, and the other thing is, is that if everyone could please before they speak, state their name so that those who are not on the video conferencing or just calling in via telephone can, uh, know who is speaking at that time. Okay? So, uh, the first item on our agenda is the citizens' comments. Are there citizens' comments at this time? Okay, um, I don't believe there are citizens' comments. There's nothing in the chat that is coming up um, from citizens' comments, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is, uh, the minutes from the February 13th, 2020 meeting. If people could take a minute to, um, review those and if there are any corrections that need to be made on those minutes, um, please go ahead and, and, uh, speak. Karen, do you, did you observe anything that needed changes?
I thought you might ask. Um, no, I did not.
Okay.
Do I get a gold star for that?
Thank you, Ian.
Absolutely, Anne.
Alright, since there are no, um, corrections being noted, um, would someone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Is there a second?
Seth Kratz, I'll second.
Alright, any other discussion? Okay, so the way that, um, we'll be voting is you'll have to state your name and then your vote. Okay? So, all in favor?
Sharon Fontaine, yes.
Okay.
Tim Bell, yes.
Okay.
Karen O'Neill, yes.
Jessica Marshall, yes.
Seth Kratz, yes.
Sue O'Reilly-McCray.
Go ahead, Sue.
Sue O'Reilly-McCray, yes. Okay.
Abby Pratt, yes.
Kristin Gonzalez, yes. And Pat?
Thought I let it off. Pat Schur, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have a little checklist going here with everyone that's present. Um, David? Are, are you interested or able to vote?
He left the meeting?
No, I see him.
Thumbs up.
I don't think his mic is working, Kristin.
Okay.
He voted yes, thumbs up.
So I'm taking that as an approval.
Yeah, so David, if you would like to use the chat feature, since we can't seem to hear you, if you would like to use that option, um, it is there. I'm just waiting to see if he writes anything.
He left the desk. He might be calling in too or something.
Okay.
Now he's back.
I'll give him just one minute. Thank you for everyone's patience.
I had that problem was pretty easy to fix, but...
I s- I see David, but... Okay. I don't know where he just went. Okay, next on the agenda are, um, the superintendent's report.
Uh, good evening, everyone. This is John Schedule Superintendent of Schools. Uh, this past month has been one of the most difficult times in all our lives, full of complications and rapidly changing information and events. At this point, we know we won't be back in school until at least May 4th with a real possibility of not returning at all this year. We're all wondering how long this disruption will last and coping with this being the new normal for some time to come. We're adjusting to the idea of working from home with new childcare and elder care realities, travel bans, quarantine, enclosed businesses. We have friends, family, coworkers, neighbors, and people in our communities who need support, who have health issues or have fallen victim to the virus and are struggling to survive. Our district has been doing everything we possibly can to support our students, families, employees, district towns and departments, and each other during this unprecedented time. The administration team has been absolutely incredible and has gone above and beyond to ensure everyone is getting what they need, that support is available to all, and planning ahead for both the known and unknown. That being said, all of our staff have also done the same. From the time this started, our staff has risen to the occasion and stepped up in ways that have been nothing short of amazing and inspirational. I can't stop thinking about how smoothly everything went this pa- these past four weeks in our district, given the unprecedented circumstances. As I reflect on the craziness of the situation and how things were literally changing by the minute, the one thing that stayed constant was all of our staff and the professionalism and dedication they have to our students and families. They are the unsung heroes who kept everything going, everyone calm, and pulled together to deliver education in a meaningful and unique way. My heartfelt thanks goes out to each and every one of them. As spring peeks into the air, I see the signs of rebirth and reconnection in our schools. Even though our schools are closed, teachers are in touch almost daily to discuss lesson planning and converting our usually low-tech face-to-face approach to a high-tech remote approach. Our students are connecting with classmates through video chats and maintaining their friendships. Although our schools are physically closed, I've been overwhelmed with the notes of thanks and well wishes from parents and community members as PV RSD navigates its extraordinary moment in our history. Most importantly, I see an opportunity for us as a community to become even closer. While we are used to connecting in person, we are a supportive school family. We already know that PBS RSD spirit is powerful and follows us wherever we go. It is a spirit of love and shared vision for the future. We will all be doing school differently for a while, but I want to assure our students and families that we will continue to think about and plan how to keep traditions alive and happening as we move through the spring. We're thinking about our seniors, the prom, the graduation, the sixth grade students, and the moving up ceremonies, and all the traditions that exist in all grades to ensure those things still take place, even if they look a little differently. We are still together even while we are apart. Finally, despite the turmoil and challenge, uncertainty and disconnection, please know that the whole Pioneer District family is in this together and we will continue to support each other, our town and community. Um, we have PV RSD guidelines for remote learning that we, we sent out. Um, and I really want, this was done in collaboration with the PVR EA and PV ASC. Um, and I really want to personally thank Renee Keer, Claire Brennan, and Kim Godfrey for their input and being such an integral part of putting these guidelines together. They have truly been remarkable and I give utmost respect to them and how they've handled everything related to this situation. Um, that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Ariel LaRoe, who's going to talk a little bit about our district-level teams and the remote learning, um, guidelines and how that's looking. So Ariel, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Hello, I'm right here.
Alright.
Hi, hi, everyone. Good to see you in this different format. Um, I've been doing this a lot lately, multiple times a day. Um, so, starting to get used to it, I guess. Um, so in planning the remote learning, um, and working with the administration team, one of the things that, um, I maintained and that people were in agreement with was that it was important for us to make, to be flexible, um, and to allow whatever plan we put forward to be flexible for our teachers, for our families, for students, um, given the uncertainties of the situation. Um, and while of course it is important that we continue learning and providing experiences for students where they can engage with each other, with, with their teachers and with their academics, um, we also know that they also need to, um, appreciate the spring and be with their families and that families have, uh, various obligations. And of course, teachers are people too and have families and children of their own. Um, and given the unknown that we may have to care for someone who falls ill or we may fall ill ourselves, um, all of that went into how we designed, uh, the remote learning. And, um, I'm really proud of what we came up with and being in contact with other districts and other curriculum directors. Um, I feel like we're, we're putting our students first, um, as opposed to just piling on. Um, so what we came up with was the idea of a team approach and I was really impressed by the guidance that did come out from the Department of Education and the Commissioner, which noted that this was a time for potentially deeper learning, um, and having students kind of go into, um, you know, go into what they've learned in a fuller mode, to be creative, to get outside, to do project-based learning. Um, and this is very much in line with the district goals that, uh, the administration team has set out, um, in reimagining education. So this was kind of a perfect opportunity for us to do things a little bit differently and, um, and to meet everyone's needs the best we could. Um, so what we've done is there are, uh, grade-level teams across the district at the elementary level. The teams are PK, um, pre-K and K, um, one and two, three and four, and five and six. So the teachers that teach those grade levels are meeting virtually, uh, once a week and are sharing in planning. Um, I'm not sure if it's all of the teachers, but most of the teachers have created Google Classrooms where they are posting assignments, they are hosting online meetings with their classes, they are doing read-alouds and recording themselves. Um, one-on-ones and IAs are participating and connecting with their students and with families, um, via email and via the classroom. Um, and part of this is so that if one of us were to need to step aside for whatever reason, you know, if we fell ill or if we were caring for someone else, um, then there would be support from other teachers who are aware of what is being planned at that grade level and no classroom will go dark. Um, everyone has joined each other's classrooms, classrooms. And so as a team, they can support students. At the middle and high school level, we've done a very similar thing, grade-level teams. Um, and with, uh, IAs and special education, uh, either floating around or, uh, working with their specific student and being part of the classroom that they would be part of. Um, our library and guidance departments have, um, posted resources and activities to be used across the board at any grade level and are offering assistance to students. Um, and at the middle and high school level, we were already focusing on project-based learning and, um, sort of incidentally, and I'm really glad we were able to, to still do it, on March 13th, which was the in-service day, we did go ahead and, um, John Lepore came and spoke to, um, faculty about the land and about how the land could be used in project-based learning. And then we had, um, teachers working together in kind of spur-of-the-moment teams to develop a cross-curricular project that pulled in all of their content areas, um, thought outside the box, got, you know, it was just sort of imaginary, but planned, um, a project that would get students out of the classroom, out of the school, interacting with each other in, in different new ways. So that kind of drill came in handy because it's almost exactly what we're, we've been doing and having teachers plan and I think it's kind of an exciting time. So, again, using Google Classroom and, uh, the grade-level teams have all set up a grade-level project that incorporates, um, all the content areas, including electives and, um, PE and art. And it's one project per grade level at a time. Um, some teachers are floating, or actually not floating, but they're going to move between more than one grade level. Um, Claire Brennan is moving between grade 11 and grade 12 because we have two high school English teachers for 9, 10, 11, and 12. Um, I stepped in and, and am doing a, a piece of the project for grade 10, so we're all kind of collaborating and members of each other's classrooms again. Um, there is also a separate advanced placement team that is working with the AP students and their classes and AP students are expected to, just like they would, um, regularly, they have to do their, uh, grade-level project as well as their AP work. So, so the objective was to make this as accessible for families and students as possible, make it engaging and as fully supported as it can be. And that meant that the team approach would enable us to work together and support each other in case anybody is in, in need of, of stepping away for whatever reasons. So. That's it.
Okay, thanks Ariel. I'd also like to just add that, um, we do have our COVID-19 frequently asked questions, um, document on the homepage of our website and we're all updating that, um, frequently. So if you're looking for information, you can always, um, try that document, um, as that is being updated, uh, regularly. Uh, and I'd like to just run through quickly and have the, um, the principals start and then, you know, give a little update, Special Ed Director, Technology Director, District Nurse Manager, Facilities and Food Service Director. Um, we're going to be brief, um, and so if we want to start maybe the elementary principals and then we'll go to Kevin Burke and Pioneer.
Okay, um, this is Megan Demara, Principal at Northfield Elementary. And, um, Kelly and Chris and I are just going to do a quick sharing of the synopsis of the things that we're doing at the elementary level, um, which is also probably pretty similar to Pioneer as well. So we, um, when we first closed on, um, the, well, I guess the 13th, the teachers came in on the 16th and, um, really quickly put together packets for the short term. At that time, we thought we'd be out for the two-to-three-week period. Um, we have since distributed a second round of packets to families who, um, either have expressed the need or wanted them, or in some cases to all families. Um, again, very quick turnaround with limited time in the building. I want to echo John's statements about, um, being really proud and impressed with the work that our teachers are doing in really, really difficult times. I feel like we are accomplishing the impossible. Um, we had, we have a hundred percent of packets out to families either because they've come to pick them up at the schools or teachers and others have volunteered to bring them to houses. Again, a great community effort. The packets are, in some cases, worksheets and workbooks and things like that, but also supplies for creative projects at home and other things that we could provide so that kids could continue with some of that deeper learning like Ariel was mentioning. Uh, we also have, um, of a priority is making sure that we are staying connected with our students and, um, that they are also staying connected with each other, with their teachers. So the Google Hangouts meets like we are on right now, our kids are doing with their teachers quite regularly. Um, in some cases, that's just a, a, a saying hello opportunity, but in other cases, they're running morning meetings, doing read-alouds, um, teaching lessons. Um, it could be individual and small group, um, sort of tutoring and, um, um, providing services as well. So, you know, a big focus is making sure that we are, are staying connected first and foremost. We're also using this platform to stay connected as staff as well. I'm going to let Chris go next.
So, some of the ways that teachers are connecting with their classrooms besides the Google Hangouts is through Google Classroom or, um, an app that's similar to like a Facebook that's safe for teachers to use called Blooms or, uh, Class Dojo, um, which is kind of similar to Google Classroom. And on those pages, teachers are posting assignments and activities and links. Um, they, the kids were just getting access to emails today, so elementary kids can now email their teachers when they have questions instead of playing the game we've been playing for a week, a couple of weeks now where we have to email the parents to get to the kids to hear back from them. So that's a nice little technology piece that's come along for us. Um, in classrooms, we have our team members being part of the classroom, as Ariel said. We've also got special ed, we've got IAs, we've got one-to-ones. Um, and everybody's working together to look over assignments and support the, um, kids as they're working. And it's a way for, the Google Classroom helps to, and some of those other platforms help to keep everyone on the same page so you can see the assignments that the teacher's putting out for kids to do and modify it if you are a special ed provider or something like that. Um, we also just completed Chromebook distribution at the elementary level for, for any families that...
Needed a Chromebook.
And, um, I will tell you that I had small group meetings today and a class meeting today and was only missing two students. So the addition of being able to give everybody Chromebooks, um, was super helpful. In Warwick, I checked out 14 Chromebooks out of our 16. So, lots, lots of kids took advantage of that. Um, and I, I have been working with David to help and with the support of our PTO to help Warwick kids who don't have internet access or can't financially afford internet access right now to get them Warwick broadband. And so thank you, David, for all your help with that. And thank you to the WCS PTO for funding. They've, um, volunteered to fund at least the next two months, depending on how long the closure goes, of, um, service for these families. And I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Perfect, thanks, Chris. This is Kelly Carrier, Principal of Burninston Elementary School. Um, the two pieces that we've done at the elementary level in keeping with the thought of teams and groupings is working with all of our special education, uh, teachers and service providers. They very much come together, um, as grade-level teams and the thought the same way, but coming together in the entire building and looking at how can they provide services and supports. Um, larger documents have been created in, um, on Google Docs, really being able to look at how they're connecting with their students and also making sure that we're not overwhelming our families because some families may have, um, multiple service members. And so making sure that we're not, they're not getting three and four calls a day or seven calls in a week, um, and just kind of feeling overwhelmed with where everything is at right now. So, becoming systematic with their approach and looking at what would best fit the family's needs for services at this time. Been very helpful, um, to not, you know, duplicate phone calls, um, and to kind of streamline. So that is something that started this past week. Um, and it's been nice to see kind of the documents growing and the communication going back and forth. Um, another part that we've been looking at is different ways of just family outreach. So again, trying not to overwhelm everybody, but inter- interacting and making sure that we're connecting with all students. Um, at this point, everybody in, in the elementary levels have been contacted at some point since the March 16th time and we're trying to keep pretty consistent communication. Um, and whether that, you know, whether a classroom teacher is struggling to get ahold of a family after a week or two, um, then it usually gets passed up the chain a little bit to principals and we might be able to connect with, you know, our adjustment counselors and stuff like that to see what would be the best way. And that's why having the opportunity of different platforms to use. So maybe the parent ha- is struggling with, you know, emails and so we're able to, you know, utilize some of the technology as Google will create, um, Google phone numbers so we can send a text to a parent that might respond, um, faster than, than having a chain of emails, um, that they kind of get lost in and stuff like that. So again, just trying a variety of ways, um, to connect with people and again, you know, to echo what Megan said. I mean, teachers truly went above and beyond to drop off packets at people's homes for family outreach to literally bring the education to their doorstep. I mean, it was, it was very, it was something to be proud of, it really was. So that's, um, something that, uh, all the elementary schools have been doing.
Okay, thank you. How about, uh, Kevin Burke?
Uh, yeah, I'm here, John. So first of all, thank you. Thank you for, to the committee and, uh, good evening, everyone. First off, I want to recognize our seniors, the class of 2020, and the impact it's having on their last year at, uh, PV RS. I want them to know that we are thinking of you and that we got you. Many people, as you've already heard, um, are working on ways to ensure that your time spent at Pioneer Valley is celebrated and recognized. We got you. Our faculty and staff has been working hard to roll out grade-level remote learning projects. Our school counselors have been working to support students, provide counseling, and have even begun next year's registration process. Our special education teachers and instructional assistants are working with grade-level teams and families to support the educational needs of students. We also have been working hard to ensure that we are providing technology support for both students and staff to provide them with the tools required. I want to give a big thank you to the Technology Department and Ms. Kathy Hawkins-Harrison for, uh, working through this process. Our staff also has put out, um, two competitions so far for students. Uh, the first was a digital social distancing poster. Um, and this week is making a new meal for school lunches, uh, following the proper meal guidelines. Students are receiving gift cards from local businesses as rewards for, uh, winning these, and we're doing them per each grade level. We are staying connected with students through grade-level meetings. We've had several of those. We've also had several meetings with parents to address any questions or concerns or that they might have had. I want to give you a brief overview of some of the projects because I think some of the projects that are being done, um, are pretty incredible and the fact that teachers have only had about a week to put these together is... The seventh and eighth grade started with a great, uh, video explaining remote learning. I would check that out if you get a chance. Question section was set up for students and the project rubric was posted, setting criteria for, um, exceeding meeting or eating improvements for those assignments that are out there. Um, in the seventh and eighth grades, students were given a choice of doing three of six activities that were posted in the Google Classroom. It's a turning green classroom project. Of the six activities, um, they are, one is looking at transformation. One is looking at if empathy was the most important value. And another one is one person has the power to change the world. Another one's looking at carbon footprint. Another one is how is our current world situation changing our ecological footprint? And the last one is about Earth Overshot Day, which is the date humans have used, uh, more users, resources than they can naturally replenish. Um, so these are, these are some great, um, activities and students have some choice, uh, to focus within there. The ninth grade, uh, follows along with, uh, definitely the natural aspect of that, which is what is the land project? The objective of this project is to choose a piece of land to assess, collect, and interpret data, make connections to climate change, propose a solution, and reduce the ecological disturbance effects of climate change. Uh, week two is more of a humanities focus there. Uh, it's dealing with a grant proposal on the solutions that are proposed. Week three is going to have more of a cultural focus and week four is going to have more of an art focus. In 10th grade, focus is genealogy, physical anatomy, and how humans express their differences. Week one focuses on health, um, recognizing healthy and unhealthy relation, uh, relationships, structure and functions of the reproductive system. Week two has more of a bio fault focus, looking at chromosomes and the function of mucarotic cells, comparing and contrasting the processes of mitosis and meiosis, and using the Punnett square to model medallions inheritance of a single trait. And then we go on to week three, which they'll have ELA. Uh, they'll be writing a memoir about family traits and relationships. They'll be reading a memoir and they'll be writing a portfolio reflection. Week four moves into art, which is creating a self-portrait along other things. And week five moves into math where they're doing surveys and, um, gathering and analyzing, uh, that data in different formats. Then for the grade 11 project, they are looking at thinking about your future. And this is, um, happening every four weeks, students will pick either, during, this is a four-week project, which every week students will pick their college, technical school, or place of employment, or branch of military. They'll research the history of those, they'll determine specific topics or study skill sets at those, they'll look at the expenses at going in that direction. Um, and the part I really like about this is every day they're supposed to take a walk for about 30 minutes, ponder their thoughts, and then they're supposed to journal this and share that at the end of the project. In grade 12, um, they're doing a COVID-19 response simulation, which is pretty cool. Students are being challenged to role-play a decisive actor in the current COVID-19 crisis. The role they pick will be based on the interests and passions. The decisions they make will impact the challenge of containing the COVID-19 outbreak. Students pick roles such as the financial sector, the human, the health and human services, federal, state, local government, media, small business owner, and labor leader. They, some of the things they have to do is, whom are you responsible to? What are you responsible for? What powers do you have? What resources do you have available? What resources do you need? What knowledge and skills do you need for your role? And the great thing about that, our seniors get the choice of really focusing on areas that they're interested in. So I think that's a great part of that project. And as they move on, there'll be four different challenges issued throughout the project, more information updates, and they'll have to make decisions based on those updates. And I hope the class of 2020 figures out how to get us through this crisis, through this project. You can see our faculty and staff is off to a great start, ensuring that remote learning is hands-on, using resources in the natural world with an interdisciplinary approach and connected to our grade-level standards. I also want to acknowledge our parents, who are helping their families adjust this new normal and supporting their students through all this change. It's their support that will ensure our students continue to get a quality education. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Chris McGuire, do you want to talk a little bit about special education?
Yes, I'm right here. I'm going to say kind of ditto to what everything, everybody already said. My staff is working with all the teachers in groups, as Ariel has described. So I just want to briefly talk about PT, OT, speech pathologists, guidance counselors. They have put together a website as a resource for parents, and it is on the Pioneer Valley Regional School District website. If you go to departments on the website and go down, click on special ed, special education department, it will pop up with the special education website, which it has various areas for PT, OT, as I said, speech, and guidance and wellness. And there's some wonderful resources that they have put together that include links to other sources, but videos that they have made themselves and activities, things that parents can do to reinforce some of the skills that they may be missing from direct contact with these specialists. So they are in contact with them, they also have office hours. So they're still continuing to get services that they need to get, but just through a different venue. So I just want to emphasize that. And all my staff are also working on offering virtual IEPs if parents choose to do that. If the, if parents are due for an IEP, they can do it the way we're doing it right now. If they choose not to, they can wait until the fall and have a face-to-face meeting. So staff are organizing around that. And I just read through my first virtual IEP and it seemed to go quite well. So that's it from our department. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Maybe Tyler Plus, he's been working extremely hard and 24/7 these last few weeks. We want to give us a little technology update, that would be great.
This is Tyler Plus with Technology. As you can all imagine, technology's been a very large piece of this. And first, I want to thank my principals and the teachers for helping identify students and handing out the Chromebooks to those that needed them the most, because that was one of the largest pieces of this. The technology department has been working mainly to provide teachers and students with the tools they need to keep instruction going during this time, while also keeping everything safe and secure. And that has been our primary focus, getting teachers and students the tools they need and supporting them with those tools. And I just want to thank Artemis Murray, John Heffernan, Jenny Garenen, and Skip Zonoritis for being very helpful in getting teachers up to speed on all the new tools that some of them may never have used before.
Thanks, Tyler. And Carla Simpson, our district nurse manager, she's been on top of this entire situation and I can't thank her enough. I didn't know, Carla, if you want to give a little update?
Sure, everyone, I can do that. Let me just, I wrote this down, so in case I got kicked off. So, get to the top, okay. So as you all know, this virus continues to wreak havoc on Massachusetts, the, our nation, our country, our world, the whole thing. Massachusetts right now has 19,000 confirmed cases of COVID-19. This number is likely much higher, as there are thousands of test samples pending daily. Franklin County is currently one of the lower-ranking counties as far as numbers of cases and deaths, but this is largely due to the fact that we're a rural area and we just have smaller population. This virus once was thought to be one of the biggest concerns was for elderly and immunocompromised, but it has been proven to affect those that are of younger ages and also considered to be infected. This is evolving regularly, it's pretty scary stuff. The repercussions for us locally are huge. We have families that have lost loved ones already to this illness. We have people sick right in our local area. Many have lost jobs as a result of the economy and the impact on the mental health of our faculty, staff, and students as a result of social isolation have probably yet to even be realized. These are really scary times we're in. So since the beginning of our closure, I've been working closely with the admin team on various health and safety issues. Everyone's been awesome to work with. I've been offering guidance on staff entering the building safely, preparing packets for families so that we can transport them safely. And I've been in close contact with Dr. Protey for our medical resource. Our nurses, as you all know, are incredibly caring, thoughtful group of hard-working individuals, and they're really committed to students and families in our district. Early on in our closure, everyone was working pretty regularly with trying to get things wrapped up in their schools and arrange for pickup of scheduled meds and as-needed meds and offices, office supplies that were kept in the nurses' offices for students. Right now, the nurses are all working remotely. They're available at home for families to contact them with questions, guidance regarding this health situation. We're all monitoring the wide variety of resources available for those in need of local assistance with food, utilities, and that, those nature kind of things. We update the working document on PBRSD that John mentioned, the COVID-19 useful resources that's on the PBRSD website. We have links on there for families and staff to add that, to get them. Our work has now shifted into planning for the future opening of our schools. All of our nurses are researching and keeping up to date with the science of this virus, planning to care for our students in our schools in the way of, excuse me. We're doing webinars, online research, we're subscribed to all sorts of newsletters, online courses. We're trying to research various position statements of organizations such as National Association of School Nurses to help guide us in planning to safely open our offices for students when we do that. The nurses and I meet weekly and obviously remotely to discuss our findings and various issues that arise. I think we've, we're all, we're not sure when we're going to be going back to school, but at this time, it's definitely our position as nurses that we don't feel like it's safe or practical to open in May, as currently set forward by the state. CDC recommends isolation rooms for students that present with COVID symptoms at school. As we all know, looking at our buildings, it's not possible with any of the office configurations that we have other than mine at PBRS. Otherwise, an isolation room just really isn't possible right now, space-wise. It also brings up the idea of, do we have the equipment needed to do isolation rooms for kids that have symptoms? And how do we protect the kids that are already in our office when those kids come in with symptoms? CDC stresses the importance of identifying local cases of COVID-19, identifying those cases quickly, strict quarantine, isolation, and contact tracing. In our small towns, this becomes really difficult with a lack of resources. That said, each one of our nurses are currently registered with local organizations that help match healthcare professionals with public health needs during times of health-related emergencies. Our nurse over at NES is working with one of the nurse leaders at Frontier and ForCog to help build a list of volunteers for massresponse.org, which is an online registration system. Hopefully, this can help bridge the gap of public nurses, public health nurses available in our area, and we can hopefully jump into some of those roles and really help our communities before we get back to school. But obviously, this is a process that takes time. Opening our schools in a few weeks, it just doesn't feel safe for staff, students, or families, as our buildings just really aren't conducive to social distancing, which is why we closed. Our health offices just don't have the supplies and policies in place to adequately keep this virus out of our schools. So this is what we're working on right now. Obviously, being out of school is less than ideal. We all miss our students. We miss the security of more predictable schedules and working hours, of course. We're all feeling worried about the frequent flyers at home and knowing that the comfort that they look for in our offices, that they don't have that at home, a lot of them. So we're making the best of our time, we're researching, we're getting ready. We hope we're back to school soon, but not as soon as the state is currently offering. But that's all I have for now. Stay healthy, everyone.
Thanks, Carla. Thanks to you and all the nurses for your incredible work. I'd like to introduce Kevin Seaman, our facility director, who has done an amazing job. And a big thank you to all the custodians for their work throughout this crisis. So Kevin, if you want to update us a little bit?
Good evening, everybody. So primarily, our first week was solid cleaning and disinfection of all the buildings, whether it was in their own buildings or moving around the district to help out with other buildings. Since then, we've moved on to supporting the planning process for distance learning, being in the buildings and assisting with the pieces that we could assist with, such as moving things around or cleaning and disinfecting as people go along to make sure that should there be anything that we're trying to keep that out of the building and disinfected. Third, we continue to support the central office staff as they're coming into the building. We're moving from the cleaning and disinfection to more of a support role, building check for mechanicals and security. And I can't say enough, like John said, about the custodial staff in the district. They have been absolutely fantastic. Not one of them to claim, and every day smiles on their faces and continue to do so with anything that we ask. So my thanks go out to them. They make my job so much easier. Aside from that, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody in rolling out the pieces that we've rolled out. And impressive to watch our district function the way that it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Hey, John, it's Jim. Can I add something?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I just want people to know that track practice is going on, that the last two weeks, every morning, I email the, our track kids a workout and hopefully it gets them off the couch.
That's great, thank you, Jim. That's great. Keeping the kids active in this time is important, get them outside and exercising, so thanks for doing that. And then Mike Onorato, our food service director, he's been amazing through this. And again, a real thank you to some of the heroes in our district, the cafeteria workers who stepped up and made sure that our students and families were fed during this crisis. And again, really went above and beyond. I want to thank our cafeteria workers. You know, we have some amazing staff here in the district. And when times are tough, and this is about as tough as it's going to get, they really, they really rose to the occasion. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you to give a little update and thank you for everything you've done.
Hello, everyone, this is Mike Onorato from Food Service. So a quick update on where we are with food service. Obviously, this crisis school closure has taken its toll on all aspects of our schools. It will impact food service profoundly, since food service operates on a profit and loss budget. We need to produce revenue to cover our costs. Obviously, we'll go over that later in the, later in the meeting. For the first week of closure, we were able to create and distribute meals for children during that first week. That was all possible because of our food service staff members stepping up and being willing to come in and produce on-the-fly all of these items with whatever they had on hand. It was absolutely amazing. Since then, superintendent schedule and I have worked out in agreement with Franklin County Technical School to make sure all of our towns receive meals for children at neighborhood drop locations, including at our schools themselves. This has worked out well so far and has allowed for our food service staff to be kept safe from the risk of contracting or, more importantly, spreading the COVID-19. This has allowed for closing of our school kitchens to reduce foot, reduce the foot traffic and clean and sanitize environments. Some of the things we're doing, trying to mitigate our cost loss. We did receive that Breakfast After the Bell grant in January, and there is still some funds left in that grant that have not been used. I was able to speak with representatives from Project Bread, who issued us the grant, and we can use whatever's left in that grant towards food costs and so on and so forth from that first week of serving. We filled out requests and waivers with DESI for seamless, for the seamless summer option to serve meals, to be approved for reimbursement for the meals we did serve in the initial days of the closure. We're waiting final approval to be able to submit the claims for the month of March. We closed up schools kitchens to the extent that propane is off. All available coolers and freezers are shut down and empty. Be able to save money and reduce some of the wear and tear on our equipment. Probably next week, I'll be going in to do an intensive inventory to be prepared for if and when we are able to reopen this year. And the food service staff, what we're doing right now is we're doing professional development and training. So DESI offers a lot of online trainings and seminars that remotely food service staff can take advantage of, because we, by USDA guidelines, we have to do a specific number of professional development hours this year anyways. Other than that, everything has been a little crazy, but we've been able to get through this and we look forward to that day that we get to start, we get to open up our schools and see our kids and serve them.
Thanks, Mike. And I just want to end this with just saying a special thank you also to our central office staff who continue to have to go into the building to, you know, serve essential functions. So Suzanne, Jason, Brenda Beck, Scott Adams, Joanne Wallace. Again, Tyler, Artemis, Dottie have all been amazing. So I just want to, again, say thank you to all of them for their, their hard work throughout all this. So thank you, everyone.
I just would like to also add a thanks to all of our staff and faculty within the district. At this time of crisis, we've had to move quickly, decisions have had to be made very quickly. It's been quite challenging, but everybody has really thought outside the box to ensure that the district keeps moving forward, that our students' educational needs and social emotional needs are being met, and doing it all with smiles and tremendous willingness to make sure that everything is taken care of. So a huge thank you to everyone. This has not been easy, but your work, your hard work has not gone unnoticed and the students and the families are receiving, you know, the benefits of all of that. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the Director of Finance report. Tanya, are you with us?
I am, sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think Sharon had a question or comment before I start. She had her hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Tanya. I just want to reiterate the same thing really that Kristen said. This is a real reminder of what a remarkable district we have. Your administration and the staff has gone above and beyond to see to our students, their educational needs, their nutritional needs, their medical needs, all of these things. Our staff has not, it seems like, have a heart beat in all of this. So thank you, big thank you to all of them.
All right, so obviously, just like everybody else in the district, even though I'm far, far away, I have been just as involved as I was in the past through this crisis. I actually was on spring break with my students, my kids, when this all started, and started conversations with John as soon as the news of school closing broke out. We have been in conference calls with the state pretty much on a daily or every-other-day basis, talking about funding budgets, how that affects grants, rural aid, any of our funds that we may not be able to continue, you know, finish using this year because our schools are closed. Working with the towns themselves, working with the town managers and coordinators, with the whole extension of property taxes to work with them if they needed to do a payment plan on their next assessment and so forth. So there's been a lot of pieces to the financial puzzle of this as well. And it's been a pleasure to be able to still continue to work with the district and really help ensure Suzanne and Brenda and John and hopefully the school committee that we will be able to get through this and we're still gonna come out in the black this year. As Mike mentioned earlier, the school piece is a pretty significant hurdle that we're going to have to get over, but I have already reviewed our expenditures and found areas to pull funds from so that we can cover those expenses and continue to pay our school lunch staff in addition to the school lunch subsidy that we already had budgeted. Our cash flow is gonna continue to be fine. Like I said, we were working with the towns and they were actually all able to pay their April assessments on time, so that was not an issue. The other pieces are preschool. We're still working on that and having meetings with Chris McGuire and looking at what other districts are doing because that's another area that is revenue-driven to pay our costs. So we may need to find some areas to cover those costs as well. But I've been doing a deep dive, as I would have going into year end, looking at what we have left in expenditure. So all of that's going on behind the scenes to make sure we're still being able to pay for everything. And, you know, we're gonna come out of this in the positive. And had this happened more than a couple of years ago, I think it would have been a lot scarier than it is right now. But again, I've been working with Suzanne and Brenda. I've been available pretty much all day long if they've needed me because I am working from home for the most part for the district here in Florida at the time as well. So I've been able to hop on the conference calls during the day and things with the state to keep abreast and able to make sure that I have the information I need from Massachusetts as well. I think that's pretty much out where we're at now. We are in conversations as well with the transportation piece of things. John and I had a conference call with Pam from Kizmeskis and she sent us out some information. Today, actually, as far as percentages and fixed costs and stuff, she actually sent it to everybody that's on the contract. So we may speak to that a little bit later. We were actually gonna request a special meeting to talk about doing addendum to that contract so we can continue to pay our contractors and ensure that they're gonna be there when we do go back to school because this affects all of our businesses that provide services to us as well. I think that's pretty much it as far as an update goes. I have my normal reports and I'll go into a little more detail about some of the things that this affects as I go over the financial reports. Does anyone have any questions right now?
I don't see any questions and I don't see anything in the chat, Tanya.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the accounts payable reports either from February or or March or April that you have in front of you?
If people have questions, you can feel free to also use the chat option that's up in the right-hand corner of your screen if you're using the video option of the meeting.
Our accounts payable was smaller this time. You know, a lot of businesses that are working on, you know, remote staff, there are things that we're not getting services for, et cetera, right now. So I expect that to continue to be less than normal for the next couple of months. Again, things like professional development and all those things that would normally be happening this time of year that are not because everything has been canceled. So the accounts payable report, I think I will move on from that. Sorry, I'm just going back and forth to the agenda. So as far as the financial reports go, the March meeting was canceled. So obviously, I didn't have a chance to go over the February expenditure or revenue reports. I'm not gonna go into detail on the February report specifically unless anybody has any questions. I'll address some of the issues and the transfers that I requested in the March reports. If that's okay with everybody, just for the sake of time.
Go right ahead, Tanya, unless I hear others. That seems to be fine.
So let me close those out. So our revenue report for this period, everything is still on track. We are set to receive our revenue in June to finish up our tuition from Vernon. That's another area that I had thought would be affected by this, but obviously, we're continuing to provide remote learning for our students that are students at Pioneer. So that's not an area that's affected for us. Our regional transportation, they are actually typically, we don't receive that distribution till late May or early June. And in the conference call with Jay Sullivan today, they are actually, as soon as they receive their allocation for that, they're looking to push that out to the districts and towns. We are conservatively on tap to get about $45,000 more than we originally were budgeted to receive in that area. Possibly more than that, depending on how everybody's end-of-year amendments came in. So that's why these distributions come later in the year. The end-of-year report amendments are due on March 31st, and then the state has to look at those to see if any of the Schedule 7s that relate to transportation were amended by the auditor. So that's why it's kind of a mileage may vary because the percentage that they're able to distribute depends on what the total expenses are of all districts. Chapter 70 is looking like it's gonna come in about $7,000 more than we had originally expected. Our charter school reimbursement actually is looking like it's gonna be about $22,000 higher than we originally expected. That's based on our current monthly funds that we're receiving in our Chapter 70. They do an adjustment in June, so those numbers may change when they do the adjustment and true up in June. But other than that, we're on track. I will mention, going back to the transportation situation, and I mentioned we're in conversations about doing an addendum to the contract for our current situation. Whatever monies we don't pay to our transportation vendor are then obviously not eligible for reimbursement, so it affects our revenue budget next year. So in speaking with our financial overseer, we are actually looking to set up what's called a regional transportation revolving account. This is something that most of your regional school districts have. I think that this district in particular has not had it in the past just because this is an area that has actually been over-budgeted in the past. What this regional revolving account does, and I will bring the full details for a vote to the May meeting, it allows us to put any excess reimbursement we receive for the state over what we budgeted into a revolving account to help us offset transportation expenses in the future year. So what this would allow us to do for FY '21 would be to offset and continue to pay the budgeted expenses in FY '21 for transportation if we have to decrease our revenue budget that we're affecting because our expense this year is going to decrease. So it's kind of a complicated puzzle piece, but one of the things that we've been working on as all of this has evolved and making sure that we're gonna be okay in the future. So just something for the school committee to be thinking about. Again, I did not have the time this week to dive into the MGL and get all the documents and a vote put together to set that up. The school committee does have to vote to establish any revolving fund that the school holds. So that'll be something for the May school committee meeting. Any questions on revenue? Nope, okay. I'll go back to this sheet then. The expenditures, I don't... I'm trying to find my transfer sheet that was sent to you guys, and I'm not seeing it in the documents. Did you guys receive the transfers to be voted in your documents or...?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Let me just go on to the... Pull them up real quick then. Just bear with me for one second because I like to have those available while I'm talking about the expenditures. I will say while I'm pulling this up, you will notice that there are a number of negative lines right now in the expenditure report related to instructional assistance, admin assistance, special need instructional assistance, and so forth. The reason behind those is not that we didn't do a good job of budgeting, but we had budgeted in the 2% for those contract increases last year, but there was a significant turnover throughout the beginning of the year with some of our special needs IAs as well of our, as well as our IAs at the regular school level that attributed to the increases that were not in the budget because the contract was voted after they came into play. We do have enough funds in other areas, teacher salaries, insurance lines that aren't being spent, et cetera. So I don't want you guys to panic. The total's about $10,000 across the entire district, so it's not a huge amount. And again, I have already looked at that and that will be a vote for the May school committee meeting. The reason it's not on this particular one is because it's not completed in the system yet for payroll. Suzanne is still working on that and those retro pays will be paid on the April 17th pay. Again, so it's not complete yet, but you do see some of those because that's the project she's been working on at this current time. So looking at the Central Office section of this budget, the only one that's in the negative is the Superintendent Office supply. We're expecting to have a couple hundred dollars more of expenses that we need in here just for additional things that we've had to mail out. But again, we may not be using all of our paper now that we're doing all this stuff remotely, so I actually don't know if there'll be any more orders this year. But we have funds up in our superintendent travel lines and some other areas to cover. We need to end up ordering some more supplies, so I'm not worried about that in particular. But I didn't do the transfer yet just because I don't know what those expenditures are gonna be. I'm estimating them just to be a couple hundred more dollars before the end of the year, but I'd rather wait until we're finished ordering if we order it rather than doing multiple small transfers for those amount. Moving on to Burniston again, as I mentioned, you have your figures for your instructional assistance, for those overages. There are a couple of small overages for fuel. You'll see those in your transfers. The reason for those is the cost for the bidding was not known at the time that we budgeted last year. So the $400 that we paid to the Lower Pioneer Ballet Collaborative that does our bidding was not in the budget. So that is in there to be transferred to cover in this evening's transfer votes. Moving on to Burniston, same situation. You have your classroom instructional assistance and your special needs. I will say that $700 and, I believe, $85 of the special need instructional assistance was not due to the PVASP contract. It was actually a longevity payment that was due that was not originally known because there was a date of hire or something. So Suzanne and I worked on that to rectify and get that particular instructional aide her longevity payment this year that was due. Same thing again with the fuel. That's part of our bidding cost. Going down to Warwick, really, it's just your instructional assistance and your admin assistant. You will notice that there's a negative currently listed in the light and power. The reason for this is because the bulk of our credits, because we have the solar situation at Warwick, we like the net meter credit situation, is that that will usually end up in the positive because we have more credits than we can actually use during the year.
Hey, Tanya, can I interrupt you for one second, please?
Sure.
Sue is asking a question regarding the document that she has. Can you see it in the chat?
Hold on just one second. So I'm looking at the actual expenditure report right now. I'm not specifically talking about the transfers yet.
Does that answer your question, Sue?
The expenditure.
Perfect.
I just wanted to have that available so that I could reference them as I was going through the expenditure report because there are not transfers for every negative on here currently at this time. And I apologize, I can't see people raising their hands while I'm looking at the document because I only have three. So back to the light and power thing, we have the net meter credit at Warwick. We have probably more encumbered for actual expense than we will end up paying at the end of the year, but that's what our bills were for last year. But again, we have the solar credits that we get. So as the spring comes and obviously as the buildings are closed down, that will end up in the positive at the end of the year. So there's not a transfer request to cover that at this point in time. Moving on to Pioneer, it's really just your salaries for anybody that's on that PVASP contract, so nothing major in the Pioneer sector of the budget. The share budget, you'll see the only thing here that we have to address is our McKinney-Vento transportation. This is something that is one of those areas where we budgeted extra next year because you never know if you're gonna get a foster kid that's considered homeless and fall under this McKinney-Vento transportation into your district. And we ended up with two additional students this year, so it increased our cost. Thus, we ended up budgeting $25,000 for this next year instead of 10. So there is a transfer in tonight's transfers for $10,000 that will cover the current transportation that's in here as well as a couple outstanding invoices that we didn't receive before this warrant. Excuse me. I promise I don't have this crazy virus. I still am coughing from the flu I had when I was there, which is crazy, but... And then the special ed, there's really nothing. It's like 82 cents in one of the lines. So everything, everything's pretty much in line. I have gone into some further analysis. I've spent actually quite a few hours this week because of the situation that we're in reviewing our expenditures. I'm working on the Central Office right now to basically figure out where we're gonna be at the end of the year, what we have remaining for two expenditures, to determine the line items that we're gonna use to cover things like the school lunch, covering the preschool if we need to, covering some choice out tuition that I know is going to end up over at the end of the year. So all of that analysis is happening. And once I finish that, I'm gonna be working with Brendan the next couple of weeks as well to go through all of our open purchase orders and get those adjusted accordingly to what we're actually going to be paying throughout the end of the school year so we can get a better idea of where we're gonna end up on June 30th. So that's what's going on there, but we're gonna be fine. I just want, you know, I don't want people panicking because this is, you know, a huge financial burden, especially in a lot of homes. We were really concerned about our towns. Again, that's why we reached out to make sure that if there was anything we needed to do to help them, that we made arrangements with them. And like John said, you know, working with our communities right now is more important than ever. And I think we have rebuilt the trust and relationships with our town. And unfortunately, this process, I think, that is gonna get even stronger as we continue to communicate with them, especially through the budget crisis that's happening at the state level. I explained earlier to John and the administrative staff that what's gonna end up happening, just to give you a quick brief summary, is a lot of the revenues that the state receives that funds our Chapter 70, like sales tax, are being dramatically impacted right now. And it's not just Massachusetts, it's across the entire nation, obviously dealing with it here in Florida. So they're going to be revising their budget, which means the budgets that we saw in January may be significantly reduced. So we're gonna be working side by side with the towns over the next couple of months to make sure that the budget that the school had is gonna work for the towns as well because their revenues from the state are not gonna probably be what we got in our first round of the budget back in January. So there will be more to come with that in May as well. Does anyone have any questions right now on the financial reports for the district before we move on to school lunch?
I don't see anything, Tanya, in the chat.
So the transfers need to be voted. There are only, there's really only the one for the transportation that is a vote. So it's the $10,000 being voted from special, well, sorry. One of those lines is regular special need transportation. And the line that has the $4,350 is actually our special need summer transportation that was left over from our summer program. So those are the two lines that I'm requesting to pull from to cover the shortage in the McKinney-Vento transportation for the year. So if you guys could vote on that, that would be great. The other transfers are... transfers are the ones that don't require a vote because we're just moving from custodial supplies to the fuel line and that's within the facilities budget. So those are for information only.
All right, Tanya, for those who do not have the documents in front of them, could you please um, in regards to the budget transfers that require a vote, could you please just give another synopsis?
Sure.
Um, of where they're coming from and where they're going?
Yep. The request is to transfer a total of $10,000. 5,649.73 is from our special needs transportation line to our McKinney Vento Transportation line. The other $4,350.27 is coming from the special needs summer transportation line to the McKinney Vento Transportation line to cover for additional students that require transportation.
Okay. And there is a question being posed um, that these transfers are not on the documents that we have. So if you could clarify that, please, that would be great.
I can actually um, I can share my screen. So bear with me for a second and I will go to my email and see if I can pull it from that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for everyone's patience as we navigate this virtual meeting. In the meantime.
This should be nothing for me because I'm used to doing this, but I just didn't have it um, in the documents that as a final. So I'm just going to pull it up and send it very quickly to myself so I can share it with you guys. I should just give a couple of seconds. I apologize. If I could remember which year we're in, I feel like we're already in FY21. So all right, let me just go back to my actual desktop because to go back and forth. Since I'm not sitting in Massachusetts at my computer there. All right, let me see if I can share my screen with you guys. Present now. So let me do this and then can you guys see that? On my screen?
I cannot see anything, Tanya.
How about now?
Yes.
So it looks like they're
Can you guys see it now?
That's okay.
Pat, you can?
I can. Does not, four nine Yes, four nine twenty transfers.
Is everyone else able to see the document that Tanya is sharing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So Kristen, this is Abby. I'm on the phone, so I obviously can't see it. So if someone could share the number so I can at least write them down, that would be helpful.
I just read the transfers out, but I'll read them one more time. It's a total of $10,000. 5,649.73 is coming from special needs transportation line. And $4,350.27 is coming from the special needs summer transportation. The total amount of $10,000 is being transferred to the McKinney Vento Transportation line to cover the current deficit as well as outstanding invoices for McKinney Vento Transportation for FY20.
Abby, are you um, are you, do you have that?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding those numbers thus far?
I'm going to stop sharing then. All right.
All right. So um, is there a motion on the floor regarding these budget transfers?
I would move that we transfer $10,000 from one account to the other. And this is Pat.
Second, Sharon.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, if everyone could um, just state their name and either say uh, yes, no, or abstain, please.
Sharon, yes.
Uh, yes.
Jim, yes.
Karen, yes.
Sue, yes.
Abby, yes.
Yes, yes.
Seth, Chris, yes.
Kristen, yes. And David, are you there?
Yes, I hope so.
Thank you, David. And that's everybody.
Suzanne. Justin.
Yes, Anne.
On future votes for the negatives.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Anne.
Uh, if you could call for the no votes first because they forty, then we can assume that all the rest are in favor.
Okay, I can do that. All right. So that is all set. Next on the agenda are the um, the lunch reports.
I shared my screen again. I just want to make sure that you guys can see that for anybody that would prefer to look at it on the screen instead of on the paper that they have. I don't know if that's easier for you guys or not. And Mike, do you want to go over these or do you want me to go over the lunch reports?
Mike's not here.
Oh, he's gone. Okay. So um, as you can see in February, we had a small loss, but that's typical because we only have three months that we're serving lunch in February. Um, I think we briefly touched on this back in January, um, kind of as foresight of what was going to happen. Um, when we closed February, we had, we were doing very well. We were in the positive $28,000. And even after I'm just going to zoom in a little bit on this so you guys can see it. Even after paying summer salary if we were to break even in every month moving forward from March until noon, we were expected to be in the positive $12,000. Um, we actually expected to originally come out the end of this year at least $25,000 because we would have had um, three to $4,000 in profit moving forward at least each of those months. Uh, unfortunately, moving into March, things changed a little bit for everybody. Um, currently right now, looking at the March lunch report, I hope I'm not moving too fast, but I know we all have a lot on the agenda tonight. Um, we still are in the positive at the end of March, $25,000, which taking into account summer salaries would bring us down to about 9,000 or a little over. Um, obviously having a loss in March because we were not serving lunch for an entire week, but we were paying expenses, salaries for the entire month as well as our food service costs um, and invoices from February. With that being said, this does include us being able to get reimbursement for the meals that were served for the time that school was out. So that has been taken into consideration. Moving over to the projections for the end of the year.
Oh, wait, Tanya?
Yep.
This is Karen.
Yes.
There is a slight correction uh, to make on the very upper left-hand corner of your
I see, we didn't change the month.
That's right. And the open bell, the balance date.
Yes. So I will make sure that Mike changes those going forward. He is actually preparing these, which has been wonderful. Um, because it's taken one more thing off of my plate. Um, and it's full mode food service director. So I'll just remind him to change those dates. And I apologize that I didn't catch that on here.
That's okay.
Um, I did review them, but I didn't catch the date. I was looking at the rest of the numbers. So moving over to our projections for the rest of the year. Um, this is where Mike was talking about earlier, where this is really going to hurt and it's but everybody, you know, we're in a rough situation right now. Um, looking at the rest of the year, we went ahead and plugged in our projected salaries. Um, we do have a USDA order that's coming in that will be paid in April. It's all frozen goods that will be able to be kept um, for when school returns or when we return to school in the fall. And that is just the transportation. Those are all of the um, foods that we basically get for free from the USDA. So we don't want to turn those away. And in addition, if you look at the top section for June, it takes into account the $23,400 that we have budgeted for the subsidy. Um, and it also takes into account in the expense portion, we have a people that have paid in advance for their lunches. And at the end of the year, there is a journal entry adjustment where it backs it out of revenue and books it to a liability because we either owe those funds back to seniors per se, or those are lunches that we didn't actually serve. So we do have to adjust our revenue at the end of, end of the year for those dollars. At the end of this, we are going to need to transfer probably about $33,000 from other lines in our general fund to that subsidy line in order to be able to make our school lunch whole. It's a very different picture than we were looking at at the end of February. But I do have, and I again, I don't want to jump around too quickly, but I did provide a document called projected transfers to cover the school lunch subsidy. It looked like your expenditure report and it's just a one-page document. I think that's what Sue might have been looking at earlier, thinking it was transfers.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yes. Yeah. If you, if you guys have that document, it has a couple of columns on the left there that has um, remaining to be spent and it's available for us to spend. So as you can see, we're expecting our bills for the financial overseer to be $4,500 for the rest of the year, leaving us a little over 11,000 there to pull from. Um, the, my salary, obviously, um, this takes into account if I am voted back in this evening. So it takes that salary into account for the rest of the year as well as what would be remaining there. It takes into account our unemployment for the rest of the year. Um, we did see, or sorry, Medicare voted back because of our increases in salaries and salary changes that happened this year. We're also going to have some funds left in that line. Um, there are actually quite a few other lines in here that we're going to have funds left in, but those were the ones that were easy for me to analyze and get answers for and have this prepared before the meeting. So we have a little over $45,000 there that in May I'll be requesting to be transferred to the food subsidy line to ensure that we'll be able to break even with our school lunch at the end of the year. And again, ensures that we're going to be able to continue to pay our staff um, in the school lunch, even though we're not operating, so to speak, because it does run like a business. Does anyone have any questions on that? I don't see any hands. I don't see anything in the chat.
I don't see anything either, Tanya.
Okay. So I'm trying to be thorough and
Karen, I do have a question.
Sure.
For the, the first line, financial overseer, I see that remaining is an amount less than what available is.
So the remaining is what we're actually going to spend. So that's what we have to pay for the rest of the year.
Okay.
And the available is what we have available to transfer or basically transfer to another line throughout the rest of the year. Because you'll notice the amount that is encumbered is more than what we are actually going to spend. And I have already confirmed with him what his expected bills will be till the end of the year. And 4,500 was a very conservative number. Our bill this past month was just a little over a thousand.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay. I don't see anything in the chat either, Tanya.
Okay. That's all I have for financial reports. And again, we'll have more in May um, with updates and budget transfers and looking at where we're going to be at the end of the year. And I'll be continuing to sit in on conference calls and be as involved as I can with John um, to make sure that we make it through this.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Tanya. Um, signing of the warrant, I will make arrangements um, with Joanne to go to the school and sign the warrant. Um, per the policy we approved at the last school committee meeting. Um, next on the agenda are subcommittee reports, so negotiations.
There has been no negotiations. We're probably on hold until this virus gets over with and we can start doing something.
Okay.
That was Pat.
Great. Thanks, Pat. Um, building in grounds?
Yes, there's really no news there. We haven't done anything because of all of this going on. So I'll update as the, it's appropriate.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, curriculum, curriculum and personnel?
Yes, um, we did not meet uh, this month, but uh, we do have a meeting planned for April 30th because the MAS C has issued new guidance on superintendent evaluations during the COVID-19 situation. And so we will be holding that meeting on the 30th. And Tracy Novick will be available to take our questions. From there, we'll make a proposal at our next meeting as to how to handle superintendent evaluation this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Um, Mike is not here to discuss budget subcommittee. Um, Tanya, I don't know if you have any information or if you've attended any budget subcommittee uh, meetings recently.
So we, no, we haven't had any subcommittee meetings recently. Um, we are going to be looking to schedule one here probably in the next couple of weeks. Once we have some more definitive stuff on transportation and some more information on the state, from the state on um, you know, what the budget stuff's going to be changing for the towns. Um, and we also do not have the decision back on Warwick yet. So we have had admin meetings talking about budget for that, but we have not had any budget subcommittee meetings to discuss that because we don't have any decisions at this point in time.
All right, thank you.
Let you guys know.
Um, policy subcommittee?
Uh, this is Abby. So we met on March 5th. We had another meeting planned for March 26th that I canceled. Um, from that meeting on March 5th, we uh, organized our questions for Tanya and the student activity account policy um, based on what the auditors had asked us to do and are hoping to move forward with that as soon as we can. Um, we have a con, we have a signed contract with MAS C to uh, revamp our policies all the way through. Um, and I, I don't have a more recent update than that at this point, but once um, they've collected their paperwork and gotten everything organized, then they will be in touch. I'm guessing that's going to be a longer process with everything else going on. Uh, we also looked at the exit interview policy and the important thing that the subcommittee wanted me to bring to all of you um, surrounding that is that there's a lot of confusion in the current policy and the current form on where exit interviews should go. If a school committee member receives an exit interview, please make sure that it gets to the chair or that person's supervisor or both uh, so that we have a chain of command. If you receive one yourself, they're welcome to share it with you, but you're not the official person to receive that from them. And we had some other questions on there that we hopefully will be able to move forward with once this is done or remotely if we need to. That's it.
Thank you, Abby.
Can I just comment real quick so that Can I just comment real quick so that maybe since we are down and kind of working from home and I have a little more flexibility, could maybe set up a time to just reconvene and figure out where we're at and what you need from me at this point in time? So we can put the amendment together for the school or for the student activities soon. Now is probably a good time.
I, so I'm happy to do that with you, Tanya. Just email me and we'll figure something out.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you both very much. Um, and district agreement, subcommittee report, um, there is no update at this time. Things are sort of in limbo with this COVID nineteen. Um, let's see. Next on the agenda for new business, uh, there is a memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning the COVID nineteen. Um, does everyone have this document in front of them?
Yes.
I do.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this document?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, it looks by the way, yeah, this is Sue. It looks by the way, the document is worded. Um, that uh if faculty cannot um make themselves available teaching, that they will have to take sick time. And my concern is that we have really changed the uh work situation for all of our faculty. And people have gone home to very, very different settings. Some people have gone home to young children. Some people have may have gone home to elders they're caring for. And um frankly, I just think we need to pay people. I don't think it's appropriate to be saying if you can't, you know, meet the demands, you have to take sick time. I think our faculty will work really hard to do everything they can and under enormous pressure and stress. And I think as a district, we should just pay them, period.
Don, do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Uh, yeah, right now we made the decision early on that we were gonna support our employees um and stand behind them, you know, during this crisis and pay everyone. Um, and so I think, I don't know if you're referring to section number five, but um, my understanding there, there are, if, if somebody does fall ill or has to stay home um to take care of somebody, maybe that's fallen ill, that they are entitled to, I believe it's twelve weeks that a hundred percent pay um that they can, they can take. Um, I think this document um was put together by Russell and it was run, you know, by the uh, by the union. Um, just to ensure that, you know, we're, we're on board and we are supporting, you know, like kind of officially supporting our employees, which we have done since the very beginning. So I, I, I agree with you um that we need to stand behind the employees and, and pay them during this time. So this is a document put together by Russell, looked at by the union. I don't know um if Renee, you want to speak to anything, you know, about this, but this is just something that says we are standing by our employees. And I know this has an end date right now of May first because as of right now, we're expected to go back May. As of right now, we're expected to go back May fourth, so um we would have to, if, if the closure was through the end of the year, we would have to come back and just extend that to the June eighteenth um end of school year date. But I don't know, Renee, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Renee keeps coming in and out, but that was one of the things that um he actually was at one of, was one of our concerns was that the end date is for May first. Um, and we wanted it to continue on to through the end of the, end of the COVID experience, the end of the, end of the year, and Russell really didn't want to do that. We talked about that for a while with our junior representative grad. And so, I mean, it, it is what it is. We're certainly hoping that everything can, you know, continue forward and that everyone will be and that things will move very smoothly and that no one will be held, you know, very in harm for, you know, whatever circumstances happen from here on to the end.
I, I think it's really important um for us to revisit this at our next meeting. Well, let's see, we're in April. Um, so I think it's important that we ensure that if this crisis continues, that we extend the date past the May first. Um, I know that, John, you have been in uh constant communication with Desi as every week. Um, gather updates and help with this decision-making process. So it would be my hope that um if things change and we go past this May first um timeframe, that we can revisit this and adjust that date.
Yeah, we will definitely revisit and adjust the date to extend to the end of the year. Because like I said, we've been standing by our employees since um this first started. That was one of the first things. I emailed the employees back, I believe, on that Friday, March thirteenth. Um, one thing I didn't want them to worry about was them losing their jobs and not being paid um during this, during this crisis. Um, so I agree with Sue and you that um we will make sure that they are paid. If it extends through the end of the year, we'll make sure that happens, you know, and we extend that date um through that time period.
I want to, I want to make sure that everybody knows that John has always said right from the beginning that every employee would be paid and everything would be fine for them. Um, this, this little, you know, process that we've had with the date, that's really been Russ is his issue, not John at all. He has always gone forward and said that he would make sure that everyone was paid. So I have to really thank him for that and for always being very supportive in making sure that all of the employees felt that the district was really supporting everybody and that everybody was going to be okay.
Yes, I think I'm back on now with echo what Claire said. So thanks, Claire, for picking that up. Um, yeah, and as far as if it's in section five that you're questioning, I think that has to do with the federal government stepping up and being willing to pay folks out of other funds and not being able to, not asking them to take out of their sick time. So we've recovered that. But yeah, if it could read at that last line, you know, whatever the duration is, but as John from day one said that he was wanting to support the staff and we felt supported by him.
Thank you for clarifying that, uh, both Renee and Claire.
This is Pat.
Kristen?
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
Okay, I think Sharon had her hand up first. Take her and then I'll talk.
Okay, Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, well, if Pat has a question, go ahead, but I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, no, I was just gonna make a statement that I wondered if there would be some way that we put something in the motion that would say what we wanted to say, that it would be extended during this, this virus. Or some, I don't know how to word it, but if John goes with it, um, it has, it's legal that we put a date in there or a time or an end or whatever.
That we could, I mean, in the motion, it could state that um.
To revisit?
You can word it however you, you would like, that we'll revisit this agreement if the circumstances continue past May first and adjust the date.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion that we're memorandum of understanding between Pioneer Valley Regional Education Association and Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning COVID nineteen to May first, but to revisit it before May first so that if it needs to be extended through the rest of the school year, we'll check with our legal counsel to do so.
And I'll second that motion.
And who seconded the motion?
Pat.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Is there any discussion or further um clarification needed on this matter? Okay, so um as Ann had requested, are there any opposed? If you could just state your name? None, okay? Um, in favor, please just state your name and yes.
Karen O'Neil, yes.
Tim Bell, yes.
Sharon, yes.
Sharon, yes.
Abby, yes.
Sue, yes.
Seth Kratz, yes.
Jess, yes.
David, yes.
Kristen, yes.
David, yes.
Thank you, David. And that looks like we have everybody. Ann, are you, are you good with that?
Uh, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, great, thank you.
If nobody opposed, we could assume it's all in favor, but if you want to do roll call, that's fine too.
Just because people can't see and they're with this technology, um, we were advised to do roll call, just to make it clear for everyone. Um.
I understand.
Can I just chime in for a minute? Some of the language that our representative had added, um, which we had wanted to add to the MOU was that the agreement is in effect through May twenty, May first, twenty twenty and shall become null and void thereafter unless otherwise agreed upon by the parties in writing. Should the governor extend his emergency order closing the schools, this agreement shall extend concurrently and through the end date of any such order. That is the language that we had hoped to incorporate into the MOU. So if that is something that you are willing to do, that is the language that our representative really thought would be most appropriate.
I think that probably should have been included in this request because it's a little hard to um add that in now. I'd like to, but I think this will cover you. I don't know.
So given that this is the document that Russell has approved and we do have a motion on the floor um with a second.
And a vote.
And then, and a vote. I think that um John and I, what we can do is uh follow up on that and inquire as to why that language wasn't there so that if we, if this continues, that we can, you know, if it is agreeable, we'll have that language added in on the next MOU.
Yeah, I think that would, that would, thank you. But again, I want to make sure that everybody understands that John has always said that he, you know, would make sure that all the employees of Pioneer would be okay. I want to give him credit for saying that. I really do. I don't want this to look like something that we're, we're going against him because we're absolutely not.
No, I wouldn't, I didn't see that at all. Yeah.
I think it's really important that we stand behind all of our employees within the district. Um, given there's so many challenges and stressors at this time, um, we just, we need to take care of one another as a part of this process.
Yes.
I, and I agree with you, and I'm sure Renee does as well.
John?
Yeah, Chris, Kristen, this is John. Um, you know, I know the language that they had just read. I mean, that does seem appropriate to me. If you want to stick with this original document, I'm fine with that. And I also feel that we're gonna stand behind our employees, so if the committee wants to consider that other language, they can, whatever the committee, but I, I would stand behind that language that they had referenced. Um, that, you know, if, if the governor does extend this emergency um order, you know, closing the schools, then we would, we know that we're gonna um extend, you know, concurrently through the end date of, of that order. So whatever way the committee wants to go, but, but I do agree with the union, um, who's been absolutely fantastic that, you know, we're gonna stand behind our employees. So whatever way you want to go tonight is up to the committee, but I, I would agree with that language that they've referenced here tonight.
Okay. So we have a, we have a vote. We've already conducted a vote on that MOU. So um, moving forward, I, I will have a conversation with Russell in regards to that. Um, John, like I said, you and I can follow up with him um to ensure that if this circumstance goes past May first, we can ensure that the appropriate language is within the, the next MOU um if we have to create one, if the COVID nineteen is still a, a problem for us.
So can I come back in and just say, thank you, John, for that? Um, thank you, the school committee for supporting us. We absolutely appreciate it. We are working our hardest to do the best that we can for our students. And this is a very, very difficult time and we need all the support from everyone that we can get. It's just very difficult right now for everyone. But we absolutely appreciate your support in everything that we've gone through so far.
Yeah, you have my support a hundred percent and um I'm kind of feel as though Russell will agree with the language that needs to be added to that.
Yeah, I'm certainly gonna follow up with him um regarding this for further clarification.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So um, number two is the memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Association of Support Professionals and Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state of emergency concerning the COVID nineteen.
So I'm gonna jump in again and say that I believe that their feeling is the same as our feeling. Um, I don't think that Kim was able to join us tonight, but she is hoping um that you will also represent them as you have represented us.
And thank you, Claire, that's, Claire, that's you speaking, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that um folks know who's speaking. Um, Karen, were you gonna say something?
Um, I just, I wanted to say it earlier and I wanted to reply to Claire and tell her as well as all the support staff how much we're thinking of them these days and how much we appreciate all the new skills and all the adjustments to their teaching and support that they've had to do. And it's the Pioneer District that I know and love that is, is one community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for saying that.
The same here, Claire. So can I make a motion on the second, number two?
Yep, just state your name.
This is Sharon. I'd like to make a motion on the memorandum of understanding between the Pioneer Valley Regional Association of Support Professionals and the Pioneer Valley Regional School District related to the state emergency concerning COVID nineteen that um to May first and then to revisit it before that date with the um agreement of our legal counsel to perhaps extend it through to June eighteen.
Okay, is there a second?
I second Karen O'Neil.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, as before, um, we'll do, are there any opposed? Okay, if we could just go down the line and state our names.
Sorry, it's Seth. I, I'm pretty confident I have to abstain.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll abstain.
Tim, yes.
Sharon, yes.
Pat, yes.
Karen, yes.
Jess, yes. Sue, yes.
Abby, yes.
Kristen, yes. Did we get David? David, are you there? I can read his lips.
David, yes.
Thank you.
I'll be careful.
And that's everyone. Ann, are you um all set with that? Yeah? Okay, so the next item on our agenda. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is um the tentative change to move the May 14th, 2020 school committee meeting to May 21st, 2020 um in order to process the scholarships for class night. Um, I know that we're talking about the future and there is a lot of unknown. Um, but I think it would behoove us to do that in the event that we were to return.
This is Sharon and it's so moved.
Okay, any opposed or discussion?
Pat has a second.
Did, Pat, did you say second?
I did.
Okay, sorry, something's going on with my computer on my end, so I apologize.
That's okay.
All right, any opposed? All right, if we can just go down the line, please.
Uh, yeah.
Karen, yes.
Abby, yes.
Sue, yes.
David, yes. David, yes.
Thank you. Jess, yes.
Seth Kratz, yes.
Kristen, yes. And that should be everybody. Ann, are you all set with that vote?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, we have nothing under old business at this time. Um, John, any personnel that you would like to discuss?
Uh, no, there's no, no update.
Okay, um, we don't have any miscellaneous or updates other than um, John, I, I want to thank you for the countless hours of phone calls um that you have put in. I, John has invited me at times to participate uh to hear the meetings um that Desi is putting forth. Um, and I just appreciate, like I said before, everyone's willingness and hard work and flexibility during this time. Um, and really running with um information that's presented, not with a lot of time um to prepare, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And I'd like to thank the school committee for standing behind our employees. It really um sends a strong message to them and uh our communities and other communities that we do stand behind our employees when there are other districts that are not necessarily doing the same. I think it, it says a lot about your character as a school committee and your commitment to our employees. So I think uh, you know, that's something to be proud of, so thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
So our next meeting will now be on May 21st, 2020. I'm sure that we will have information prior to that date. So I'm gonna ask in advance for some additional patience as we try to navigate an executive session via this remote meeting that we are holding. Um, Tyler Plus and Tyler from BCNTV are going to sort of guide us on how we're going to do that. Let's see. Tyler, are you there?
I just, um, I have a question. This is Ann.
Yes.
Um, it says the next meeting's gonna be at the Lyden Town Hall and I'm guessing that's subject to COVID-19 restrictions.
That is correct.
That's it.
We'll make sure that um whatever update to the meeting, whether if it's uh the location, if it turns virtual, or if we are able to meet in person, that that is clear when we put the posting out um for everyone, so that they are aware. Um, Tyler Plus, are you there?
I'm here, uh, but it's gonna be Tyler from BNTV that you will want to communicate with for the uh up there, here he is, yep.
Okay, so hold on one second. Okay, so next on our agenda is executive session pursuant to MGL C30A 2182 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective, collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the director of finance. So in order to execute this, um and just so everyone's aware, David stated that he is not going to participate in this executive session. Um, so that everyone who is not visually on this meeting knows that. Um, we'll do the roll call like we always do to go into executive session um with the motion, and then it's my understanding that once we are in executive session, um Tyler from uh BCNTV is going to remove himself from um hearing the meeting, but we will all be in the meeting together, just school committee members um in addition to John and Tanya. So is that correct, Tyler from BCNTV? I just want to make sure I have that process correct.
And Kristen, uh, this is Tyler Plus. Uh, you may want to, uh, you should have the power now to kick anyone who does not leave the meeting during that time, um which you may want to do. Keep making sure that people other than school committee members and John's schedule and Tanya are not in the meeting during that time.
Thank you for clarifying that, and I will make sure that if um there's anyone that shouldn't be in the meeting, I will remove them from that. Okay.
And I will remove myself um when I hear, when it seems like everything is going uh as planned.
Perfect. Thank you.
Kristen, uh, can I just add, and this is John, um Tyler from BNTV just texted me and said, when everyone um votes to begin, he's gonna mute the audio and put up the uh, a graphic. Um, and then we'll just, I'll text him back when we're all done and then I'll bring it back into a open session, live session. So as soon as you start to vote to begin the, the executive session, he'll, he'll mute the audio and put up a uh, a graphic, you know, so it'll be private.
Okay. Um, so we need a, a motion, please?
First, uh, Kristen, what's the Montague Cultural Council?
So it's my understanding that they're a community organization in the town of Montague.
That, no, Ann, that's Ann, Ann Harding. Uh, for some reason, no matter what I do with my personal Google Docs or anything like that, somehow I'm affiliated with the Montague Cultural Council, I'm the treasurer. But uh, they're not hearing it and they're not involved in it. It's just that my phone number is associated with the Montague Cultural Council.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, Ann. Um
Do we have her during our meetings, our executive session?
Say that again, Sharon?
Do we have her at our executive session meetings?
We have brought her into our executive session meetings um at times. She just has to be included in the motion so that she's able to take the notes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to MGL C30A 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, director of finance, and to allow Ann Harding to be our, our scribe.
Okay, and that will um
Jonathan in this meeting too, I
Jonathan and Tom will have to be, yep, and that um we'll return to open session just to close the meeting.
And we'll return to open session just to close the meeting.
Yeah, for recording purposes.
For recording purposes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Karen, I second that.
Okay, so we'll need to do a roll call vote.
Tim, yes.
Pat, yes.
Karen, yes.
Karen, yes.
Seth, yes.
Sue, yes.
Kristen, you go, Northfield, yes. Jess, did you go?
Jess Marshall Warwick, yes.
Okay. And is that everyone? I'm just trying to look at our attendance here. Hey, Tanya and John, are you here?
Here.
Uh, yes, I am, yep.
All right, so All right, great. Thank you, Tyler, from BCNTV for your help on this matter. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn for this evening?
Yes.
Please, please state your name.
I'm Karen.
Okay, is there a second?
Pat says, Pat seconds it and says, Happy Easter.
All right, all in favor?
I
Bye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Great evening.
Thank you, take care, everybody. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.